Good evening, folks. Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. The council meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our deputy clerk to please take the roll call.
Bowring?
Here.
Bruno?
Here.
Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Kosarag?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Here.
Patchkey?
Here.
Swanson?
Here.
A warm welcome back to Alder Person Swanson.
Thank you.
Welcome back. And we ask Alder Person Mayor to please lead us in the pledge as it is her birthday on Friday.
(inaudible) 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 Item three, folks.
Public hearing is special items and presentations. Item 3A is to consider the mayor's reappointments to city boards and commissions. And let me just please make a quick comment regarding this. As all of you probably know, those reappointments are made in consultation with the respective board and commission liaisons and the board and commission chairs via those liaisons. So this list before you is the reflection of those positive recommendations from said staff. Is there a motion to approve those reappointments?
So moved.
Marx makes the motion. Patchkey makes the second. Any additional questions or comments? A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Fantastic. Item four, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk on this agenda are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bowring, seconded by Bruno. Deputy Clerk Fernari, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With 10 votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and zero absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved. We jump to item eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our deputy clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration as Alder Person Bruno revs up his mic for the motion.
The bills for payment this evening total $4,663,160.70.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council package on the city website.
Alder Person Bruno makes the motion as so eloquently stated. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Bowring. Any questions or comments on the bills? Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
With 10 votes in the affirmative, zero votes in the negative, and zero absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved. We jump to item eight, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our deputy clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration as Alder Person Bruno revs up his mic for the motion.
The bills for payment this evening total $4,663,160.70. Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's City Council package on the city website.
Alder Person Bruno makes the motion as so eloquently stated. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Bowring. Any questions or comments on the bills? Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Seconded by Patchkey. City Administrator Dawkins.
Okay, as stated, the city previously entered into a reimbursement agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad in an amount not to exceed $373,488. This agreement funded the relocation of electric division assets conflicted with the U.P. Third Rail Project, completed in the amount of $277,120.70. For your consideration this evening is a supplemental agreement from the U.P. Railroad to expand the scope of the project for relocations on city property near Lauren Drive and the Southwest commuter parking lot. The engineer's estimate for this work is $28,000, which can be accommodated within the remaining agreement's balance. If you do have more specific or need some additional clarification, we do have with us this evening Director Babica.
Questions from the council for Director Babica. I can hear you breathing. Set a quiet crowd. Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kosarag?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Patchkey?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Resolution 2024-55 has been approved with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero alderpersons absent. Item 11, folks, public comment. We invite anyone joining us here in the council chamber to share with us your thoughts, questions, concerns by joining us at the podium. It's our chance to listen, your chance to speak. Yes, sir, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Vu Nguyen. I am here to represent the Geneva Chamber of Commerce. We have some updates for the city council. First and foremost, Mike and Paul both apologize that they cannot be here. Apparently, a very busy night at Stockholm's. But otherwise, the chamber is about to host its annual golf outing, so four tickets and the foursomes are still available for the golf outing, which will be hosted this year at Prairie Landings, I believe, in West Chicago, so outside of Geneva, but still a very good event, and hopefully, weather permits for us to have that event. Outside of that, the chamber is in a quiet time before festival season begins, and so the staff is busy at work just congratulating and celebrating those that are being recognized for the West Suburban Living Magazine's Best of, which Geneva was recognized for Best in Class for its festivals and Swedish Days, and of course, Best Place to Live other than the individuals' hometowns. So great recognition for the city of Geneva and for the chamber in its work as the tourist destination for all people in Illinois. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion. What's that? Oh, forgive me, new business from the dais. My apologies. Council members?
Just congratulations to all the graduating seniors, both at the high school level from Geneva as well as at the university levels. Wish them well with their future plans.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dare I ask for a motion to adjourn this council meeting? The speed of a gazelle, that's Kosarag. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The council meeting is adjourned. We will transition to the Committee of the Whole meeting in just one moment, and I will gladly welcome Alder Person Bowring to the chair.
Welcome, everyone. I would like to call this evening's Committee of the Whole meeting to order. Tonight is Monday, May 20, 2024. I would like to indicate that all alderpersons are present, as well as the mayor. All right, so my name is Anais Bowring. I am an alderperson for the first ward. I have the pleasure of serving that ward along with my counterpart, Mike Bruno. So, let's get started with the agenda. Our first item of business is the second item, to approve Committee of the Whole minutes from May 6, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Bruno, seconded by Patchkey. Do we have any questions or comments? All right, I believe a voice vote is sufficient, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So unanimous, none opposed. Moving on, number three, items of business, 3A is to, let's see, to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with the Association of Individual Development, AID, for social service assistance. Yep, got all that, with the police department in the amount of $35,000. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Patchkey, seconded by Mayor. Do we have an introduction? Ms. Dawkins?
So, the city of Geneva has utilized the services of AID since 2014. (inaudible) 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 utilized to assist with those experiencing a mental health crisis, homelessness, death notifications, hoarding, and much more. Since 2022, AID has assisted 562 clients and has assisted the police department in reducing repeat calls for service. Chief Passrelli wasn't able to be here today, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions or comments from the dais? Seeing none, sensing none, a voice vote is sufficient, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All, any opposed? All right, the motion passes, unanimous. Moving on, item 3C, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Fair Graham in an amount not to exceed $70,000 for sanitary collection system services. Did I skip one? I'm so sorry. All right, let's move back. Three, this is why I gotta start keeping track. All right, so sorry, going back to 3B, consider draft resolution authorizing a development economic incentive agreement with Echo Base LLC for 225/227 West State Street. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
That is Alder Person Kilburg with the motion and Alder Person Kosarag with the second. All right, do we have an introduction?
We do.
Thank you.
So, Echo Base LLC acquired 225 to 227 West State Street in June of 2023 after a two-year search to establish a new location for Zazu Salon's, Illinois's largest family-owned and operated luxury salon group, with multiple locations including Hinsdale, Naperville, Wheaton, Elmhurst, Naples, Florida, and the Chicago's Gold Coast. Originally, the project's scope focused on interior renovations only. However, after engaging on permit review matters, the owner directed the architect to consider a plan for the outdated storefront. In October of 2023, the HPC approved a plan to restore the original storefront with some modifications to maximize the commercial space. As highlighted by Preservation Planner Lambert, the building is a rare reflection of Prairie School design influences and Geneva's commercial architecture. The building is a significant property within the local historic district and a contributing property in the Central Geneva Historic District and is listed in the National Register of Historic Places. The owner is seeking financial assistance to allow exterior renovations to occur in concert with the interior renovations. Funding will provide the opportunity to replace the storefront and complete other facade repairs that otherwise may be deferred, including deterioration and cracked ornamental features, upper window maintenance, including areas of rust, peeling paint, and missing components. In keeping with prior determinations for expenditures of American Rescue Plan Act funds set aside for historic preservation and adaptive reuse, we are recommending that a grant award for $24,680 be granted. The amount is 80% of the estimated storefront improvements and is approximately 2.5% of the entire project cost of $980,850. So with us this evening, we do have Director Timoshenko, and I do also believe we have representatives from Echo Base LLC as well, if you have any additional questions.
Are there any questions or comments?
No.
Yes, Alder Person Bruno.
I would just like to express support for this type of investment along State Street and improving the historic character in the public realm along that corridor. Thanks.
All right, seeing and sensing no other comments, a voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? All right, now, moving along to item 3C, again, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services agreement with Fair Graham in an amount not to exceed $70,000 for sanitary collection system services. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mayor, seconded by Patchkey. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so since January 2019, Fair Graham has provided engineering services related towards the evaluation of the sanitary sewer collection system. Fair Graham has developed and annually updated the capacity management operations and maintenance plan as required in Special Condition 20 of the 2019 MPDES permit. A sewer capacity review of the future southeast industrial area, a flow analysis report of the Fargo area, a river crossing flow model, sanitary sewer evaluation of Geneva East subdivision, subsequent improvements to the sanitary system in Geneva East, evaluation of the downtown basin area, and an evaluation of the Division Street basin. This contract will continue the sanitary sewer evaluation by collecting and reviewing flow monitoring data, updating the capacity management operations and maintenance plan, and provide support services as needed. Staff has been pleased with the work completed by Fair Graham and desires to enter into a new contract for fiscal year '25. With us this evening, we do have Superintendent Van Gescam. And do we have a representative as well? That's what I thought. So we also have a representative from Fair Graham, if you have any additional questions.
Are there any questions or comments from the dais? Seeing none, sensing, oh, my apologies, go ahead.
Maybe you could, we have a development that's in process on the west side of the river in that immediate area. If we extend, if we're, the stormwater project, I guess, is what I'm referring to.
Okay.
As far as the timing of that project in relationship to what we're looking at doing, now, I realize that may not be directly related to this, but I just thought this would be a good time, since we had you here, to ask that question. Is that going to be coordinated to some extent if that project moves forward? Or what is the timing for the stormwater or the sewer, excuse me, the sewer project from Division across the river?
From Division across the river. The sanitary that is going across the river from Division Street, we don't plan any improvements in that in the near future.
Okay.
We have continued to do rehab upstream of there, into that neighborhood on Division Street. So we're, knock on wood, we haven't seen any more issues. We're waiting, I guess, for lack of a better word, but, you know, a good rainfall to, you know, keep on monitoring that, and we'll see how it goes. As far as the storm sewer project on the west side, I believe it's out to bid. We're hoping to get that probably completed by this fall.
Good. Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Not seeing anything else. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Moving on to item 3D, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Hampton, Lineezy, and Renwick in the amount of $249,375 with an authorization to approve up to $24,937.50 in change orders by the city administrator for a not-to-exceed amount of $274,312.50 for water distribution system improvements. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Patchkey?
Second.
Seconded by Marx.
Okay, so the 2025 budget provides funding for three projects associated with the water distribution system. The first one is the project plan for the water main and lead service replacement program submitted to the IEP. The second one is design engineering is needed for the replacement of approximately 700 feet of water main at Delnor Health and Fitness Center. And the third is engineering services are needed to assist with the continued updates to the IEP regarding process, progress with the water main and lead service replacement program. HLR has performed engineering services for the water distribution system for the past several years, and again, staff has been satisfied with their work. With us this evening, we still have Superintendent Van Gescam, who would be more than happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Are there any questions? Yes, Alder Person Kilburg.
Yeah, I just had one. There's been some communication with some of the businesses and residents in the community as it relates to this topic. Can you give us a little background on that and why?
Sure.
Certain businesses were communicated with?
Well, so, I believe you're referring to the letter that went out here for the past week or so.
Yeah.
The Illinois EPA sent a email out to communities in Illinois a couple weeks ago stating that the form letter that they provided had to be sent out by last Friday, so it didn't give us much time. It was basically for informational purposes regarding lead contamination, if the service gets disrupted, or if, in case we have a water main break, that would disrupt it, but it's more just for informational purposes only. Obviously, I've been, you know, as you can imagine, getting several phone calls. I point them to our lead service line replacement program, reimbursement program that we have. I also, you know, make them aware that we have a timeline with the Illinois EPA of roughly 15 years to replace all lead service lines and galvanized service lines. The letter also went out to people who have, we don't have information on their service materials, so it's another way to try and get into these homes to identify. At some point, we're going to have to know all the service material types, so we're trying to get more and more aggressive with them, too. So this letter is helping in that regard.
That's it. I appreciate the explanation. I guess something that was brought to my attention was the issue of galvanized piping, and that's a term that I haven't heard previously until it was brought to my attention in some communication. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? And are we going to have to replace anything that we find that's galvanized as well?
We are to replace galvanized services that are downstream of lead services. So any galvanized service that we've come across on the property owner's side, we're figuring that it's either going to be lead or galvanized and needs to be replaced. The problem with galvanized, they've done studies to where the interior of the pipe is rough, and if there's been disruptions in the past, some lead may have accumulated onto that rough area, which may eventually wind up in their screens or leaching into the water. So we're, you know, once again, we've added phosphates to our water for many, many years and have been in full compliance and have had lead levels far below the maximum contaminant level, if any, so.
The galvanized element, where in the history of water lines did galvanized come into play? And do we have much galvanized in Geneva?
I believe we've got about 120 galvanized that we've identified so far. It's kind of hit or miss. You'll go with a few lead services, then you'll find a galvanized. At that time, it was the, either the plumbers' preference when they installed it, or homeowners'. But it seems to be about the same time in the 19, probably 30s to 50s, when those were installed, so.
Good. That's all I had. Thanks, Bob, for the explanation.
(inaudible) 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 Alder Person Mayor?
So I was curious about the Anderson Street replacement. Can you provide some overview of what we're going to be doing for the construction? We're replacing a 1930's water main. Is that?
Right, this, the water main is roughly 100 years old, and when we're doing the lead service line replacements in areas where the water main is that old, it's best that we go ahead and replace the water main at that time. Anderson Boulevard is a nice street for us to start on for this project because we can install the water main in the parking lane area, so our construction won't be as bad, and we can kind of get our feet wet on how the contractor and the contract itself, no pun intended, how we're going to work with the contractor to get the new copper service all the way into the home. It's going to entail a lot of PR, to, you know, talk to these people, get agreements with them for the contractor to commit on private property and replace those, but this is, this is going to be a good, interesting project.
Yeah, so what is the water main made of now?
Cast iron.
Cast iron. We're replacing it with copper as the main?
No.
Or cast iron as the main?
Yeah, cast iron's the main. We'll replace it with ductile iron.
Okay, and then the services will all be copper coming off of that?
Correct.
And the people can apply for the reimbursement program to have some of the cost offset, right?
The plan is, right now, to absorb the cost within the contract to replace it, whether it's done by the contractor or the reimbursement program has covered it all. So it's a matter of if the customer wants to get ahead of the game and go ahead and get it replaced now, that's fine, then we won't have to replace it, you know, at the time of construction. It'll be just reconnected to the new water main. The old water main, or the current existing water main, is roughly 10 feet into the parkway, so it's going to be on the west side.
On the west side.
On the west side. So it's going to be, you know, fairly close to reconnecting onto the new water main anyway, so.
So we have to come across the road for every connection on the east side?
Yes, and we're going to, in the contract, we're going to require that it be directionally Yes, and we're going to, in the contract, we're going to require that it be directionally drilled, not open cut.
Okay, all right. And are you going to remove the lead lines or leave them in place?
We're leaving them in place. There's no--
There's no reason to dig them up?
Right.
Okay. So it'll be a new water service to each home along there, each business, too, there's a few businesses.
Yep, correct.
Okay. So they need to get in touch with you when this starts to happen?
We'll be sending out notifications and, you know, the phone calls, door-to-door, all that fun stuff, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alder Person Bruno?
Thank you. I think you've answered my question, since you're taking a different route with the new pipes, so the Buffalo box is going to be replaced also?
Exactly, yes.
Existing shut, oh, yeah, sorry. Existing turnoffs or shutoffs will be removed?
Yes.
Because Mike says about that--
Exactly, yes, the old B-box extension will be removed, so there won't be any confusion.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I just wanted to clarify, because I've run into this a bit in my neighborhood, I'm a few streets over on Fifth Street. For the time being, anyone that's not in what's upcoming to be scheduled for the city to replace the city's part can still apply for the lead line replacement program. But once the city in this staged program comes through and is getting ready to replace the city's portion, then it's a little bit of a different process for the homeowner and potentially easier for them because there may be some management from the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, exactly. There won't be a reimbursement.
Right.
They will just sign off on replacing the service.
But just in case there is any confusion, because I think Alder Person Mayor was talking about both situations, and just, I wanted to make sure I understood it in case I get questions.
If I get calls that they want to replace it, and let's say we're three months out, I'm going to really encourage them not to, that we need to do this as part of the project, so.
Fair enough. And again, having spoken with you about it for the case of my own personal service, it sounds like actually that is a benefit to the homeowner, doing it folded in with the city's work as opposed to separately.
Yes.
I guess it depends a bit on perspective.
Unless for some reason they have some type of commitment that they want to take care of, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
All right, unless there is anything else, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously. I think I said pashes. Item 3E, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a professional services contract with Associated Technical Services, LTD, in an amount not to exceed $35,000 for a water system leak detection and location survey. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right. I see Marx with the motion and Bruno with the second.
Okay, so funding for a professional service contract for a water distribution system leak survey is included in the fiscal year '25 budget. A statement of qualifications was advertised with qualifications from four firms received. One of those firms was disqualified as a result of not meeting specifications. An evaluation of the remaining three firms determined that Associated Technical Services, ATS, was the best qualified to meet the project's scope. Staff met with them to negotiate a scope of work and fee for the project, and the fee proposed is an incentive base for the number of leaks found. The proposal contains a second and third year pricing dependent upon City Council approval. ATS has a long history of working with the city and has excellent results as detailed in their proposal, and apparently it's the water show tonight, so we still have Superintendent Van Gescam with us to answer any additional questions.
Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Alder Person Mayor?
Sorry, I really want to understand this better. So how do they monitor the leaks? What do they do physically to figure this out?
They have sensors that they will put on valves, mainline valves, hydrants, and then once they detect the leak, they will come back and pinpoint it with their correlators, and it's ground listening equipment. So they'll take the information that they gather from the listening devices, plug it into the computer, be able to pinpoint it from there, so.
Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right, we are moving on to number four, public comment. Do we have, we don't have any public left, so I will skip that introduction. Moving on to number five, new business. Is there any new business from the dais? All right. Oh, Alder Person Kosarag, go ahead.
Just wondering if we have a meeting next week, on Tuesday?
We do not.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, Alder Person Marx. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. All right, concludes our meeting.